Hiva, are we ready to get started? Okay.
One second, thank you guys. All right, so the first item we'll be looking at tonight is DR 23-26 baseline commercial. The subject site outlined in blue is an approximately 2.8 acre parcel located within the overall 11.82 acre Joe Porter planned area development, which is outlined in green there, which is located at the southwest corner of Lindsay and Baseline Roads. The subject site is directly adjacent to the city of Mesa right away to the north, commercial uses to the east and west, and the Porter Acres Residential subdivision to the south there. A conceptual development plan for the site was part of the rezoning case Z 9835, whereupon ordinance 1161 was approved with 41 conditions of development. That conceptual site plan and conditions of development were then amended and approved by town council on June 6th of 2023. The master site plan proposed for the site is in substantial performance with the previously approved conceptual site plan, providing three commercial pads totaling to approximately 11,800 square feet with two access points provided off Baseline Road. The parcel is zone general commercial with a planned area development overlay, and all proposed uses are permitted in the general commercial zoning district. The proposed master site plan for the 2.8 acres on the southwest corner of Lindsay and Baseline Road provides three pads of commercial use, including a 1,275 square-foot drive-through restaurant centralized on-site, a 1,800 square-foot express oil change facility along the east property line, and an 8,309 square-foot retail building along the western property line. All proposed buildings are designed in a north-south orientation, focusing the prominent elevations towards Baseline Road. As previously mentioned, access to the site is provided from two points off of Baseline Road. One access point is already constructed in the northeast corner of the site, and one access point is proposed to be centralized on-site, roughly 207 feet away from that existing access point. There is also an access point located in the northwest corner of the site, and this will be maintained and is utilized for soar and lift station access only. Sufficient circulation is also provided on-site from three major interior drive aisles running north to south, and parking on-site will be located along both the north and south property lines, as well as centralized parking spaces near all proposed pad sites. As for parking count, per our LDC standards, 69 spaces would be required, and 120 spaces are provided on-site. As for screening, an eight-foot perimeter split-face CMU wall will be utilized along the southern property line to mitigate any potential visibility to the neighboring residential uses. As for the landscape plan, the site provides 35% landscape coverage, which exceeds the minimum requirement of 15%. The landscape plan also proposes a varied plant palette of drought-tolerant trees and shrubs, including Moga, Willow Acacia, Evergreen Elm, and the Southern Live Oak. There will also be shrubs and accents plants utilized, such as Hopseed Bush, Legacy Shage, Rio Bravo Sage, Baja Rulia, and Orange Jubilee Vine. There is also an existing SRP easement and existing soar lift station access road that prevents plantings within the landscape setback along that western property line. Although the landscape setback is encumbered by the access road and soar lift station, the required planting quantities have been met along that setback. Additionally, the 40-foot landscape setback is maintained between the commercial and residential uses to the southwest. All landscape materials will be evenly distributed along street frontages, the perimeter boundaries of the site within parking areas, and around the foundation of the buildings. Pad A, as previously mentioned, is an express oil change facility that will be roughly 22 feet 8 inches to the top of the parapet, with flat roof lines and massing elements accented through variations of multiple building colors and materials. The building is oriented in a north-south fashion, focusing the prominent elevations towards the major arterial located to the north. The main exterior wall material will be constructed of split-face CMU in a gray color. The color palette is neutral gray-based and includes accent colors such as walnut, real red, tricorn black, and dark bronze. The roll-up doors will be utilized on both the north and south elevations. The northern roll-up doors provide transparency and will be accented by Andenize aluminum-colored dark bronze. And all mechanical equipment associated with the building will be screened from the public view and located internally. As for Pad B, which is proposed to be in Andy's Frozen Custard, it is roughly 25 feet 9 inches in height to the tallest point, and roughly 12 feet 8 inches to the top of the roof line. The building utilized the brand-standard building design employed by Andy's Frozen Custard Building seen around the valley, including the small primary structure that is rectangular in shape and is constructed of acme brick and acme stone. The acme brick will be colored russet, and the acme stone will be unfinished using the blocks' natural color as an accent. The large canopy and architectural blade feature on the north side of the structure will feature accent colors such as bright white, paloma gray, and real red, and will be constructed of ephes and steel with aluminum accents. The order/pickup area to the north features high windows and fully transparent elevation with metal framing, allowing for an active visual frontage facing Baseline Road with significant positive contributions to the pedestrian-focused environment. The structure also features a drive-through canopy over the pickup window that includes steel columns painted to be bright white. And the final pad for the proposed baseline commercial is approximately 22 feet tall to the top of the parapet and is also oriented in north-south fashion. The retail structure utilizes modern architecture and shares many of the architectural features and massing elements that are provided on Pad A, such as shared colors of materials, recessed walls, and roofline variation. The primary color palette is also gray with accent colors such as walnut, tricorn black, and dark bronze. The main exterior wall material will also be constructed of split-face CMU with accent walls that are colored to be colonade gray and constructed of synthetic stucco. The proposed structure will also include awnings, canopies, windows, and other architectural accents along the northeast and west elevations to provide visual interest along elevations with high pedestrian visibility. As for photometrics, there are two lighting types proposed: parking lot pole-mounted lighting and building-mounted lighting. The parking lot lights are mounted at 25 feet in height, and wall-mounted lights are proposed at 14 feet. Tonight, staff is just requesting general feedback regarding the project, as well as the applicant requesting CD submittal at risk. And with that, I'm opening the floor to any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sal. Anybody have comments or questions for Sal? Yeah.
I did give you a month off, so we'll make room for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. So, Sal, the question I had, and also Commissioner Fay will accept his answer as well. So, on the onsite drainage, it's noticed on the southern portion closest to the adjacent residential. Is that kind of the natural flow or slope? Because I think with the underground tanks and the landscape buffer, it, to me, looks efficient, but I don't want it to impact that adjacent residential to the south, because I noticed the narrative in the staff report says it generally meets engineering requirements.
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, this is something we can definitely take a look at, too, with our engineering staff. They may be here, but with this one, the thought is that the drainage, drainage would be sloped to the south, but we can get you some more information for that question.
Yeah, as long as engineering's fine that the runoff and everything can be contained on-site, I just hate for it to go to that slope to the adjacent residential to the south. And then I guess my second question would be, on the oil change building, did staff any, do they ever have a preference for the glass garage doors in the rear as well as to the front, or is that just generally aesthetic, since it really can't see anything from the back other than the residential?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, that was the thought there from staff, is that we wanted to have the prominent elevations face Baseline Road, but that's, you know, a discussion we'll be more than happy to have with the applicant to see if we can include those blast doors on both sides.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my preference, but if it's a cost issue and staff has no issues or other commissioners, I can totally accept that.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Sal, I just had one comment on the retail building, the east side of the retail building. They have those two volumes. It's a really flat wall, and it seems like it would be really easy to just create a little bit of break in that wall plane. Yeah, they have the roofline variation, but not on the wall itself, like they do in the front. It seems like you could pull out those two volumes that are flanked with the black columns, just out a little bit, just to give a little bit of variation in that wall plane. You could probably even still leave that back wall flat, but just to get something that's pulling out. So if you could take a look at that with them, that would be great.
Chair Simon, Commissioner Davis. Yeah, absolutely. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe those two panels where the stucco is utilized, I believe they are bumped out just a bit to get some variation, but we can confirm that with the applicant and get back to you.
That would be great. I couldn't find anything that showed me that, so that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Commissioner Fay.
Sal, thank you very much. My one, only one concern issue is the middle drive aisle. And I always wonder when the applicant doesn't just identify the use, but actually tells us the specific entity going in there. Is it partly to get us excited, which it certainly worked whoever put torches in, because I would have done anything for that torches one. But, and second only to torches, this probably gets me there, but that middle drive aisle is also essentially the backup for the drive-through. And Andy's, this is actually a double-edged sword, because Andy's does sometimes drive a big drive-through. And my problem is that that middle drive aisle, not only is the backup for the drive-through, it also lines up directly with the entrance onto Baseline. If you have a backup, it's going to back up straight out onto the arterial roadway. And that's, well, that's not explicitly developed in the land development code, but it's not okay. If that driveway were offset somewhere, it would wipe that, or not wipe it out, but it would mitigate that possibility of cars backing up onto the intersection, or not into the intersection, but into the arterial. And then I didn't really see a lot of discussion about traffic overall. This intersection is under capacity. It's not a bad intersection, but it's also one that is notoriously understudied. We've had several other properties, the north side's in Mesa, so we don't even see what they're doing. And there's some dubious planning, that Walmart thing is not on the intersection, but it kind of is. And then our own properties, we have the different development ideas that have come forward on, more or less on this intersection, have all come in just underneath the traffic counts that they need to do, any kind of, and I remember one time, I didn't catch this myself, and a lady made a, basically, in layman's terms, a cumulative impacts argument, and I think there is, if everything were to come in on this intersection and do what it's supposed to do, I think there would be a cumulative impacts problem potentially, and one that would slide underneath all of our analysis, because each individual property seems to be close to but under the thresholds to drive a serious traffic impact analysis. That's more of a just file it away, and if engineering is cool with it, I'm fine with it. That middle drive aisle and the alignment of the middle drive aisle and that driveway is bothersome to me, though, so take a look at that. Have Tom wrestle with it. If there's a strong reason it needs to be there, it probably meets standards by a little bit. If there isn't a strong reason and you were to offset, it would probably solve the problem.
Great. Chair Simon, Commissioner Fay. Yeah, we'll definitely look into that option to offset the access point off Baseline Road, but just going back to our LDC standards and just forwarding the information with Andy's, their order point is the pickup window. So when we look at this site and we utilize our code, which is the four spaces for stacking, from that order point on the north side of the structure, it does hold those four spaces.
Yes, that's the stacking requirement, and I'm not disputing that. It's more the driveway than the, so it's an extension of the same argument, but it's a different issue, okay?
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, not seen any. Sal, I don't have anything to add, so thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you all. And just to clarify, we are okay for the CD submittal at risk?
I would be okay for it. I think I'm all right if the rest of the commission is.
Perfect. Thank you all.
All right, thanks.
I think, actually, Sal, you need to talk to Tom and figure out if that driveway can move. If it can, or if it can't, then it can't.
Okay.
If it can, then it should, and then when it does, then I'd be fine with CDs at risk.
Perfect, understood.
So that driveway is the only issue to me.
Gotcha. Thanks so much, Commissioner Fay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Thanks, Sal. Next on the agenda is item two, use permit for 22-39 self-storage facility and DR 22-104 self-storage facility, and Samantha, you're up.
Okay, yes. Good evening, Commission. This is a study session item for a self-storage facility at Higley and Williamsfield, UP 2239. That's a conditional use permit, and DR 22104, the design review, they go hand in hand. And that's basically what this slide says. Design review and conditional use permit, they are sister cases, so staff is reviewing them concurrently, and when they are ready for a public hearing, they will also be brought forth together. Okay, so as this is a study session item, I'm looking for four things: general feedback regarding the CUP, site design and circulation, feedback on the architecture, and mitigation of impacts to the residential neighbors. I've brought forth cases on this corner quite a bit over the past year. It's developing nicely under a master site plan, and this is just another piece of the puzzle. It's that red polygon there, 2.4 acres on a 12.6 acre master site plan in the gateway character area. It's going to be a self-storage facility, about three stories and about 122,000 square feet in light industrial, hence the need for a CUP. The storage facility is allowed with a CUP. And I show this slide here. These are the required findings. Planning Commission will ultimately be the decider on whether the findings have been met. Staff is still evaluating the conditional use permit, and in our final presentation and staff report, we'll provide more analysis, but I put this up here and in the staff report for you to be prepared to make the analysis that the proposed use meets the required findings. They've gone through first review and haven't resubmitted just yet. They were waiting for tonight's feedback, so I show this site plan here and a list of major first review comments. The first one is to ensure the loading zones meet our standards for off-street loading, and there's a yellow arrow there that points to the specific loading spot that I'm talking about. The second is landscape island is needed every eight parking spaces down there at the yellow rectangle to the south. I think they have 10 spaces there, so they need an island every eight, or they can break it up however which way they want. They can do an island every four spaces if they wanted. And then the west drive aisle, it's a pretty large aisle, and staff made the comment to plan or be a little more clear on their site plan with the intent of that fire lane. Although they have a loading zone there, it could be used for loading if it's not called out, so we'd just like to see a little more clarification on the site plan, what the intent of that, those areas next to the building might be. For landscape, we also had some major comments. One of them was to swap out a sisu tree. We're, although the LDC asks for sisu trees, we're getting away from that species. Providing a landscape, more landscape along that boundary right there, that's what I was looking for. The east boundary, there's a security screen wall proposed, and this is under one ownership, so one property owner, so it would be really easy to add landscaping. When the future pad to the east comes in, they'll also be asked to provide landscaping along that screen wall, so we thought we'd make the comment there early on. That arrow points to more building foundation landscaping. That's a pretty standard request of the landscape section of the code. And they also propose a wrought iron fence. Staff found it a little strange that there's another fence separating the landscaping, even though there's a perimeter wall proposed around the entirety of the parcel. So we just need a little more clarification on that location, or if it needs to be there at all. These are the elevations. Staff thinks they look pretty good. The only big comment we have was, let's see, on this elevation, the east and west elevation, those have some pretty long roof lines, so we made the comment to break up the roof lines about every 80 to 100 feet. Staff issued other smaller elevation comments, and the architect seemed amenable to those comments, and they gave us a sneak peek of their revised submittal. So we're moving along with those. We're pretty happy with how those discussions are going, and I think it's going to be buttoned up pretty nicely by the public hearing. Let me go back one slide. I wanted to show the north elevation. On the top image, right side, you can see there's a nice break in the massing. That's the step back that's required in light industrial for buildings over three stories. Buildings within 100 feet of residential, a step back is required. So they do show that, and they comply with the 100-foot distance from residential. And staff does really like that feature. It breaks up the massing for the neighbors on the west side. Okay. Here's a slide talking about neighborhood meetings. They had two. The first one was required, and the second one, they voluntarily put that together. Some general feedback they heard from both meetings was to pay a little more attention to the landscape buffer along the west boundary, some concerns for site safety and transients along the railroad, concerns for lighting, and they offered suggestions to mitigate impacts using motion sensor technology, dimming, timing, concerns around development plans for the future of these commercial pads, since it's been vacant for some time. And here's the study session input again. I can leave this up, because that's the end of my presentation.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I was trying to work something out in my head, so. Any questions or comments? Anybody? Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi. Oh, Commissioner Davis?
Samantha, I have a quick question. On the, they had the two meetings, and the neighborhood concerns, were they addressed in the plans that have come in? Are they now, is the amount of landscaping they're providing mitigating it enough for the residences? Have you heard anything?
I haven't heard anything from the residents regarding the landscaping in particular. From a staff perspective, the landscape buffer is, meets our code and exceeds. In fact, the landscape setback is 30 feet, and they're meeting that at 35 feet. We've made comments, we passed along the comment about the impact of lighting. I have yet to see a revision to that. They're still in review, so I'll check with them on addressing some of these concerns.
Okay, thank you. I like the direction the building's going. I think it's a nice-looking building, and the landscaping did look like there was quite a bit there. I was just concerned that maybe there's something that the neighbors, I didn't know if this plan reflected the neighborhood concerns or not, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, Samantha, you kind of answered the first one I had regarding the step back on the third story in the west elevation. Another one is kind of along the lines of Commissioner Davis's. So based on the neighborhood meeting feedback, I should kind of ask if there were any changes that needed to be made. I guess my question's more along the lines is, is there any photometric plan that was needed? Because if so, I'm wondering if one's been submitted with kind of concern to that western portion facing the residential. That would be my one concern.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioner Bianchi, I have a slide for that. They did submit a photometric plan. That's a standard request of a design review, and we did make some comments. Again, you can see there on that bullet, the neighbors requested, looking into light mitigation technologies, so I can touch base with the applicant on that. They are meeting, they will be meeting our standards. I've made comments to correct the site plan to reflect meeting those standards of our foot handle maximum is .3 at the property line. The pole height is, when within 100 feet of residential, must be 14, 14 feet is the max. So these are all standard provisions to prevent light pollution into the residential neighborhood, and that is something we're checking for.
Yeah, I didn't know with security lighting or anything if that was a factor, so thank you. That kind of addresses my largest concern. I kind of agreed with staff on breaking up that longer roof line, and as Commissioner Davis said, I think for a self-storage unit, the elevations look pretty decent on the site itself, so, and it looks like the four findings of fact are likely to be met, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much for the time, Chairman.
Thank you very much for the time, Chairman. I just wanted to comment on that, I agree with you about the additional landscaping along what I believe is the western edge, I think that that'll be an important addition, and as well as commend you on trying to eliminate the sisu trees, as they're extremely water-hungry and invasive species and end up choking out other plants, and given how hot it is, I think that saving that water would be prudent, so, well done.
Chair and Vice Chair, one clarification, did you mean the east boundary where that blue rectangle is?
The right side?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I just was upside down, my apologies.
No problem.
All right, thank you. Any else? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman. Is this a 24-hour facility, use facility? Is there, for example, is there access of traffic in any time of day? And are there any security issues relating to that?
Chair and Commissioner Johnson, that's a great question, I don't have the answer as to their business hours operation. I can, I can ask and find out, certainly.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, thank you. Commissioner Faye?
Yes, actually, I'm a big fan, we should do, sorry, I said Ashley, but we should do more of these type of uses, I'm a big fan of this, and I'm a big, big fan of using a master site plan to deal with the externalities, the drainage and the, all that kind of stuff, rather than individual sites, so I like, I'm applauding staff, we should do more things like this.
Thank you, Commissioner Faye.
That was it? That was all? All right. So Samantha, sorry. So the question I had, 24-hour, is this 24-hour day? I'm a little bit perplexed, because this is a three-story facility, correct?
Chair Simon, yes.
So I don't know that I understand why the placement of the east and west, like when I'm looking at it, it makes more sense to me to put the east on the west and the west on the east with regards to those loading doors. It's not a big enough space to get large trucks in, so I don't know that you're going to have a lot of traffic there, there's going to be more traffic in that front entry and on that side loading dock. So that's just, when I'm looking at that, that's where I was getting a little bit confused, because I'm looking at this thinking, it just almost makes more sense to go the opposite direction, especially with Higley being the frontage, even though there's development in between Higley and that, so. And I'm sure there's probably been some study that's happened with regards to why they did it that way, but that would be my question as to, you know, what is the thought process to put that main loading door or entrance against the residential, rather than put it the other direction? And then, and if you have an answer for that, I'll take it, but the other question that I have is, is this a circular drive where it's a one-way entry on the east, and it's a one-way all the way around to the west? Or are they allowing entry on both sides?
Yeah, Chair Simon, those are great questions. I'll answer your second one first. They are a, the circulation is two-way. The drive width is large enough for two-way, it fits our standards for two-way flow. The first, I don't have a solid answer for you, I can document that and ask, perhaps on the east elevation, maybe they placed it in this manner, because there will be outdoor garage access on the east side, and roll-up doors, we have a provision where roll-up doors, I think it's they need to be pushed out 200 feet from residential, so putting it on the east side as far away from the residential might have had something to do with that. But I can clarify and include that in my report.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, I feel like we're looking at a dozen doors or so, and I understand that, but then I look at the flip side where we've got three stories of units with loading and unloading going into two doors that are basically facing the residential, so it just, when I look at it, I, in my head, I think it feels like it should go the other way, and then also from, I guess, an aesthetics perspective, it just looks like it's facing an odd direction, so.
Chair Simon, can I ask, is your concern maybe congestion at that west loading and unloading zone?
I guess that might be a piece of it, I mean, I know that there's some parking and some loading there on the south portion of it as well.
And the north side as well.
And the north side.
Mm-hmm.
Well, right, you've got the one bay door, the oversized parking on that north side.
Correct.
So it just, I feel the traffic in this, the traffic flow would be at the residential side, whether you have roll-up doors or not, that's where it's going to be. And so when I look at it, I think, why wouldn't it be flipped with the parking that's on the south side, on that southeast corner? And then you've got the roll doors, but then you've got the main entrance on the east side, so. I'm not opposed to the project, I think it's a great project, I like the building, I think it's a great use, it's just when I think about it in my head, I feel like if I was a resident there, I'd almost kind of want it the other way around, as far as thinking traffic through, but just an opinion.
Okay, thank you for the feedback.
All right, anybody else have anything? No? All right, Samantha, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number three is a DR 23 Whataburger, and Kristin.
All right, good evening, Commission. The case I have for discussion tonight is for a Whataburger. The proposed Whataburger is located within a master site plan at the southeast corner of Gilbert and Warner Road, seen here outlined in red, so just across the street here. Tonight, I'm going to be seeking input on the elevations and any general feedback that you have. The site is approximately 1.4 acres and is zoned regional commercial. The proposed building is 2,985 square feet and includes a double-lane drive-through with five stacking spaces. Between the drive-through lanes is a two-foot striped landing area for employees that may need to walk between the lanes. There's also a crosswalk connecting the landing area to the exterior door that employees will utilize to deliver food to that outside lane. All right, the proposed building is a modular construction with an EPIS exterior, the proposed colors are the same as the other buildings within the center. Staff has requested the addition of columns to the elevations to better match the neighboring buildings, and we've also requested the removal of the orange color from the design of the canopy, and for the colors of the canopy to match the other buildings in the center. Seen here are examples of the other approved buildings in the center, all currently built or under construction. As you can see, the buildings are very similar, and they all include columns of the same style and color of canopy. Corporate colors for the tenants are only seen in their signage. And with that, I'm hoping to get your feedback again today on the elevations, specifically on if you have any suggestions or comments other than the column and canopy modifications that I mentioned, and also any other general feedback that you may have. Nima Bilbo for questions.
All right, thank you, Kristin. Anybody have questions or comments? Anybody? Sorry, Commissioner Bianchi? No? Nothing? Wait, somebody mark that down. Just kidding. Anybody? No? Ah, Commissioner Davis, thank you.
Sorry. Samantha, sorry, Kristin, I had a question on the materials for the building, because it looks like this is just all EPIS and without any additional materials, or there, I feel like there's other materials in that center, some brick or something, I was looking, I didn't get it, I came in the back way, so I didn't go by it, I meant to. But it feels like it needs something to kind of mix up the materials, it's just a lot of stucco. I really like the Whataburger prototype that's been coming in. I think it's a really rich feeling with the natural brick on it, kind of neat, this one's not wowing me, it feels, it has definitely a 70s vibe to it, but I think maybe some sort of material, like a brick or a stone or something, if there's something like that in the center that could be pulled in, that would help it.
So Chair Simon, Commissioner Davis, the reason that it doesn't have another material is because none of the other buildings do, the other buildings in the center are primarily stucco. They've got the metal accents of the canopies, but even the column features are stucco with a different color on the bottom to kind of make the columns stand out a little more. In the original, the first review of the submittal, they did have different colors and materials, and we asked them to remove them so that it did match the other buildings in the center. We didn't want this one building to be the only building that looked different.
I do agree, it should blend with the other buildings. It's very stripey, though, so take a look at that, but the metal material will help it, for sure. I was just surprised, because it looks so different than what we've been seeing, so, for Whataburger.
It was at our request.
Commissioner Anderson.
Are the columns drawn on the elevations now?
I'm sorry?
Are the columns drawn on the elevations now, or are you requesting for them to add them?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Anderson, we are requesting them to be added. It's a fairly small building, it's just under 3,000 square feet, but at least on the longer elevations, I feel like it might just break it up a little bit more and add something.
Because I'm just looking at the floor plan and the site plan, and if you're asking for the columns to be added strictly because the buildings north of this has columns, the buildings north have columns because they're holding up a shaded structure for people to go from shop to shop, it's creating a covered pathway. This is a single building, it's only going to be one user here, so I don't know exactly if columns are needed for it, you know, what exactly are they going to do, just, so, I personally don't think the columns are needed unless, you know, this was attached to another space and to create that kind of covered pathway and interaction between the two spaces. So I would be okay with, and it's pretty, kind of, I think it's further enough away from what's happening north of it, that it wouldn't look like a swarthum in the, in the area, so I would be okay if they did not put columns onto the building. I personally, I don't think they're needed. I think the architecture kind of speaks for itself with the play of colors and forms of the building, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? No? Kristin, my only question on this is, my understanding is that this building with regards to the colors outside of the corporate Whataburger signage are matching colors of the rest of the development, so that Whataburger yellow or mustard or whatever color that is, that would be the only deviation?
So Chair Simon, every color on here, with the exception of the orange canopy, is seen within the center.
Okay, okay, yeah, I don't have any problem, then I would actually agree with Commissioner Anderson with regards to the pillars, I don't know that I see a need for them there. I feel like the building is fine the way that it is, so. Anybody have anything else? Kristin, do you have what you need?
I do, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I have item number four on the agenda is overview of the adopted code of conduct, and do we have a presentation on that tonight?
Oh, we do. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, would it be okay if I presented from the chair?
If you would like.
I'm a little out of practice, it's been a while since I've been at the podium. My apologies, sir.
Well, maybe we should give you practice, then.
And then it might become a habit, so. As you may know, the town council on June 20th adopted two policies, one including the Ethics Handbook and the other the Code of Conduct, and tonight I will be making a presentation of those two documents. And I'll take a little bit of time to just review the history and the purpose of the ethics policy, and then we'll kind of get into the meat of the provisions and then wrap it up, hopefully in time for Planning Commission. So it was, our ethics policy was originally adopted in August of 2012. It's undergone at least one amendment in 2021 to require that three council members would be able to agendisize a complaint. And then in December of 2022, at the council retreat, there was some further discussion about amending it, totally, essentially revamping it, and from there, an ethics subcommittee was formed. And like I mentioned, June 20th of this year, Ethics Handbook and Code of Conduct were both adopted. And on June 29th, you should have received, as members of the board and commission, you should have received an email from our deputy town clerk with the, these documents both attached. This is part of your annual training, you're required to look at the video, as well as review the current ethics policy, and just be on notice that these provisions, as adopted in June, are going to take effect in August, on August 21st, 2023. Essentially, our Ethics Handbook and Code of Conduct kind of encapsulate a three-pronged approach. One of them is the ethical requirements found in Section 1 of the Ethics Handbook, the second is state law, which stands alone in Arizona Revised Statute, and it's also covered in the Section 5 of the Ethics Handbook. And then a standalone document by the name of Code of Conduct was also adopted. So these kind of three-pronged approach altogether encapsulates all of your ethical duties and obligations. It applies to all elected and appointed officials, and it defines the scope of ethical standards. It also creates limitations on filings and creates a new ethics complaint process. And if I can just kind of back up, so, so I will be starting off with this first prong for the Ethics Handbook. So this next slide here is kind of just an overview of what the Ethics Handbook contains. And then Section 1 of that handbook outlines the four ethical pillars, honesty and integrity. It's expected that one will be honest and have integrity for all issues. It's also expected that you will govern and conduct oneself with fairness and partiality and respect on all matters and citizens, as well as being loyal, loyal to the community's best interest above one's own, and also to be transparent and disclose any gift with a value of $50 or more. Section 2 of the handbook kind of outlines the new ethics complaint process. It's really quickly, who may file an ethics code per, an ethics violation of the Ethics Handbook? And I make that distinction because there's also a complaint process for violations of the Code of Conduct, which I'll be covering shortly. So who may file? Pretty much everyone, as so long as you've been directly aggrieved, or if you're a property owner, business owner, staff, resident, board and commission members, as well as council members. However, there can be no anonymous complaints. And you must file, a person must file within 30 days of an alleged violation, so that's a bit of a change. Under our current policy, it was open-ended, and, you know, conceivably someone could make a complaint, you know, five years down the road. And then this third question, I'll cover in a little, in a few more slides, may I file an ethics complaint for a violation under state law? And the answer is no, that has its own statutory requirements for filing complaints. And then Section 2 and 3 of that handbook, a little bit more information about the ethics complaint process. Any complaint will be subject to a mandatory mediation, and that will require a meeting with an independent and neutral body within 30 days. And if the complainant is not satisfied with the results of that mediation, then an ethical investigation or report will ensue with the town council review and determination. Any action on behalf of the town council now requires five affirmative votes. So pretty high threshold for any action to be taken. And those actions could include these nine penalties or sanctions. A finding that ethical violation has been, a finding of ethical violation but no sanction, mandatory ethical training, letter of warning, formal censure, letter of reprimand, imposition of a $500 fine, loss of funding privileges, removal of position, assignment and or removal of office for boards, commissions, and committee members. And then as I mentioned, so this would be the second prong of the three-pronged approach, and this, and these ethics standards would be found in Arizona Revised Statute, and they include conflicts of interest, open meeting laws, public records laws, and disclosure of confidential information. The subcommittee did not make any changes, obviously, to state statute, so that remains, that's within the, falls within the purview of the legislature. And those complaints would not be filed with us, they would, depending on the nature of the complaint, would be filed either with the AG's, the Attorney General's Office, the law enforcement agency, or addressed through private citizen lawsuit. And for more information, that would, again, that would be found in Section 5. And for more information, that would, again, that would be found in Section 5 of the Ethics Handbook. So the third prong approach is encapsulated within our Code of Conduct, and that was the second policy that was adopted on June 20th of this year. The purpose is to provide common sense guidelines to assist the ability of public officials to perform their duties with the highest standards of personal ethics, integrity, fairness, and partiality. And again, it applies to all council members and board and commission, committee members. And the main distinction I'd like to make about this is, in the Code of Conduct, there is, there are no penalties or sanctions section. However, if there are multiple complaints of a violation of this Code of Conduct, it could rise to the level of an ethical complaint under the Ethics Handbook. And I have to say that the Code of Conduct is pretty dense. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but it does cover duties to the town, our conduct with each other, conduct with, your conduct with town staff, conduct with members of the public, conduct with public agencies, conduct with boards, commissions, and committees, conduct with the media, and again confidentiality. Before I go into kind of the more specifics, I really do have to say, I'm very proud to be working with you all. You are, you know, immensely professional. I witnessed nothing but professional conduct from you all, so I really appreciate that. So just general duties of elected and appointed public officials. Again, you know, it is kind of common sense that we're here to make an effort and participate. You also do have a duty to report if you believe that a violation of state law at the Ethics Handbook or the Code of Conduct has occurred. You are responsible for declaring any public, I'm sorry, any conflict of interest, whether they be personal interest or business interest, and whether they're actual or perceived. And abstaining from not voting, I'm sorry, abstaining from voting is not allowed unless there is a conflict of interest. You must attend, must not be discriminatory or harass, you must not participate in political activities such as, you know, kind of campaigning here for elected office, or ballot issues, or otherwise. There are some provisions relating to travel, and as well as, you know, the use of public equipment, such as your laptop or phone, you want to minimize any private use of that, and it shouldn't be used for any business or campaigning causes. And again, it's, the annual training email came out on June 29th. If you have not yet, please review and sign. I'd like to just, again, pretty dense with conduct with each other, use of formal titles is very helpful, especially when things get a little bit heated. For me, I've always found that the use of formal titles is always a way that says, I may not agree with your opinion, but I respect your position, I respect that you've been appointed, and that you represent the interests of the constituents. Also, use of civility and decorum in discussions and debate, honor the role of the chairperson in maintaining order, and demonstrate effective problem-solving approaches. Again, it's been a privilege to work with you guys, you always have treated staff as professionals. And here, as I look through some of these provisions, you know, I can see how as a management kind of, a form of government, a town manager form of government, that some of these things need to be specified. But as members of the Planning Commission, I think that we already do most of this. So you limit the contact to specific town staff, planning staff, you don't use your position to undue influence the staff, you, you know, you shouldn't disrupt town staff from their job, but at the same time, it's our job to respond to you. So never publicly criticize an individual employee, do not get involved in administrative functions, don't attend meetings with town staff unless you're required to do so by an authorized staff, limit requests for staff support, but we always welcome your requests and your questions. And again, don't solicit political support from staff. And then here, the Code of Conduct kind of makes a distinction of our conduct in public meetings versus unofficial settings. And here, you just want to make a distinction that if you're speaking on behalf of yourself or on behalf of the town, and again, if you run into one of a constituent in the supermarket, just don't make any promises on behalf of the body, you know, some, you can get a little, you can get a little uncomfortable maybe, but it's really important to remember that. And as we're dealing with public agencies, always be clear about whether you're representing the town or your personal interests. And if you are representing, if you are taking a representative position on a board, make sure that your position should not conflict with the town's, and always stay in communication if it does, if it should ever rise to that level. Any communication or correspondence should be equally clear about your representation. Here, anything on a town's letterhead is going to be an official town position versus, you know, some social medias, social media posts, if it has to do anything with town business, you want to make sure that you're disclosing, you're speaking on behalf of you personally. And if you ever run across any threats of legal action, please cease communication on that subject and refer any, refer them to the legal department, and we'll be happy to help you with that. And again, so Section 6 would cover town council's conduct with boards, commissions, and committees. Just some more information there. Our conduct, your conduct with the media, if you're speaking on behalf of the town, make sure that you're communicating and contacting town manager's office. And if you're speaking from a personal position, please include a disclaimer that you're not, this doesn't necessarily reflect the views of the town. And you wouldn't want it to get any discussions regarding staff members, those should be addressed directly with the town manager. And any media inquiries, again, about claims or litigation should be referred to the town attorney's office. And here, the Code of Conduct complaint process pretty much follows the Ethical Handbook. There is a 30-day limitation. Here, only the public officials or the staff can file a complaint under Code of Conduct, it's not extended to members of the public. There is a mandatory in-person meeting, can be an ethical violation for refusal to participate. And then, again, if there's multiple Code of Conduct complaints, it can be considered, rise to the level of an ethics complaint where it would go to before town council. And that's it, guys. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Chairman Simon, properly noted, and Planning Manager Eva Cutro, properly noted. I have a couple of questions. The first is a definitional one. In the part, the first part of your presentation, the term loyalty came up, and I'm concerned, I'm trying to wrap my arms around what is loyalty? I know loyalty in two senses, loyalty to my country, I served the State Department for several years in a foreign country, and loyalty to my wife. Now, in a loyalty sense for the town of Gilbert, I'm not sure what the applications are. For example, would I be disloyal if I wrote a letter to the editor of a local media and was disagreeing with the position of the town council? Or is that something that's covered otherwise? So I'm not sure what the operational definition of loyalty is. Obviously, I understand as a commissioner, I am bound by certain protocols and the respect and professionalism and the other things, but I'm still, I still think loyalty still needs some operational definition, because I'm not sure, you know, what loyalty means in a setting as both a citizen of Gilbert as well as a commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I'm not sure if that was a question, or would you, are you looking...
You're looking for an answer?
Yeah, I'm just looking for some definitional, something that has some guidance, because I think loyalty is a very broad term, because you may be acting in a way that your loyalty is to a certain principle, that may be disagreeing with a decision of the town council, or disagreeing with a policy position of the town's management. So I'm just unclear as to how you fine-tune that term in an operational sense or a behavioral sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I will start off by saying that any, these are complicated and difficult questions sometimes, and they are very fact-dependent. And it is, and it is a little difficult, I think, to address in the hypothetical. I would just really encourage everyone here that if there is any situation that arises, that I myself, including, you know, Chris Payne, our town attorney, is always available to discuss and to go over any questions. But more specifically to your question, sir, if you take a look at the Ethicals Handbook and page 4, I'm sorry, Section 1, Paragraph D, it has what, the provisions regarding loyalty. And I can read that out loud, it's not a definition per se, but there are parameters there that, what the expectation is. I will also follow up with saying that you may be aware at last night's town council that there was some direction given to staff, that it looks like the Subcommittee on Ethics will be reconvening. So I will, as part of this, I will, the liaison commissioner, I'm sorry, council member, Anderson can also communicate kind of your questions and concerns about the definition. But going back to your question, so elected and appointed public officials have the obligation to put the interests of the community as a whole over all personal considerations, and make the community's best interest their primary concern. The goal should be what is in the best interest of the broadest public good of the town of Gilbert, consistent with constitutional and other legal protections for individual rights and property interests. Now, of course, what I may consider is in the best interest of the community, and what council member Anderson may consider is the best, there's going to be a diversity of views on what the best interest of the community is. But what that says is I will not be putting my own personal interests above the town's best interests. And again, it's, if there's ever a time that there's more, a fact pattern emerges, please feel free to reach out to me.
So Chair Simon, so as a matter of protocol, especially in my role as a commissioner, it would behoove me to, if I, has something that is questionable that I'm not sure of, it would behoove me to contact your office, especially as it affects my professional role as a commissioner, correct?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much. Is this something we, I'm assuming we don't need to take action? I don't need to raise my magic scepter or do anything like that? Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
I think, given that the ethical obligation is to treat the head of the commission with, what, respect and honor?
Yes.
Shouldn't we have to homage you in some way?
Something, bow, maybe? There you go, thank you. All right, moving on. Discussion of regular meeting agenda. So we currently have, on the consent agenda, we've got the use permit for UP 22-73 AT&amp;T WCF at public storage is on the consent. Is there any reason that we see needing to pull that off of the consent agenda? Sal, or staff, anybody? Or anybody on the dais? No?
There is no reason to pull it off.
Okay. Currently on non-consent, we've got DR 22-71 Quick Trip Higley and Riggs, we've got Z 2303 Gilbert Santan, DR 2292 and DR 2293, the traditions at Fred's Place, which is a residential, and then the commercial respectively. And we've got Z 2307 LDC text amendment. Unless there's any, anybody who's against it, I propose that we move Item 14, the Z 2307 LDC text amendment to the consent. Is there any reason not to move that to consent? We're good with that? All right, so we're going to move Item 14 to consent. Are there any other items that we know of that we can move to consent at this point, or anybody'd like to discuss?
Chair, do we have other, I know we've got some folks in the audience, do we know if there are other cases that folks want to speak on?
At this point, I don't know. I don't have any comment, public comment cards.
Okay.
So, all right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and move Item 14 to the consent agenda.
Actually, I have, looking at my list, Item 10 was, I thought was one that could potentially go to consent.
And I believe we had some neighbors who were here to speak on that, Sal? Okay.
That's done, then, never mind.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and we'll keep Item 9 on consent, move Item 14 to consent, and then keep Items 10, 11, 12, and 13 on the non-consent. We'll go ahead and take a quick five minutes, and we'll be back adjourned. All right. We're going to go ahead and get started if we're ready. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able. All right. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Alternate age? Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fay?
Present.
Commissioner Blazer?
Commissioner Bianchi?
Here.
Vice Chairman Munt?
Here.
Chairman Simon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Before we adjourn, we discussed the regular meeting agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the regular agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Johnson? Have a second.
I will second that, Chairman.
Second by Vice Chair. Please cast your votes. All right. Thank you, Councilman. Move on to public hearing. All items listed below are considered... The consent agenda, I'm sorry, all items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where, after opening the public meeting, no person requests the item be removed from the consented calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved upon a single motion. And I have items number nine and number 14 on the consent agenda. May I receive a motion for the consent agenda?
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of number nine, UP 22-73 AT&amp;T WCF at Public Storage, and number 14, Z 2307 LDC text amendments.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion to approve by the Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Fay. Please cast your votes. All right. Looks like we're having some technical difficulties. So we'll go ahead and take that verbally. We have a second and a... I mean, a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Not hearing any motion carries. Move on to the public hearing non-consent. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment on... In support of or in opposition to the public hearing may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commissioner board. And I've got a few public comment cards here. If you do wish to speak, please fill one of these out and have them sent forward. We'll go ahead and move on to item number 10, DR 22-71 Quick Trip at Higley and Riggs. And Sal, you're up.
Hello again, Chair, Commissioners. Oh, is there another clicker? Thank you. So the project we'll be taking a look at tonight is DR 22-71 Quick Trip Higley and Riggs. The subject site outlined in blue is located at the northeast corner of Higley and Riggs Road and is part of the Seville Master Development Plan. The subject site is roughly 4.35 acres in zone community commercial. The subject site borders the Single Family Six zoning district to the north, east, and west, which are all residences within the Seville master plan, while the shopping center zoning district is located to the south. The proposal consists of a three-phase, three-pad commercial master site plan within Lot 13 of the Seville master plan community, and the proposed fueling facility is permitted use within the community commercial zoning district. As previously mentioned, the master site plan is to be completed in three separate phases. Phase one, which is shown in red here, will include the development of the Quick Trip site and all associated off-site improvements, landscaping, and screening for the entire master site plan. Phase two, which is shown in blue, is centralized on-site and is proposed to be a future quick-service restaurant, while phase three, colored in green, is located on the northern portion of the site and is proposed to be a future retail use. The overall master site plan for the 4.53 net acres at the northeast corner of Higley and Riggs Roads consists of the proposed Quick Trip fueling facility, a salad and go, and then one additional pad site for future development to the north. The Quick Trip will be a total of 5,312 square feet and located on the southern portion of the parcel facing Riggs Road. The proposed salad and go will be roughly 928 square feet and will be centrally located on-site, and the final pad will be roughly 5,000 square feet and located to the north oriented to face Higley Road. The proposed pads will be connected by an internal circulation network with two main internal drive aisles running north-south and four drive aisles running east-west. Three total access points are also... Will also be constructed on-site. One will be located at the southeast corner along Riggs Road, and two will be placed along Higley Road. As previously mentioned, the master site plan will be completed in three phases, with phase one including the development of the Quick Trip structure, landscaping along all property lines, off-street improvements, construction of all-site access points, and site screen walls. As for parking on-site, spaces have been provided along both the east and west property lines, as well as centrally located around the proposed pad sites. Taking a look at the enlarged site plan for our Quick Trip, it is proposed to be a 24-hour fueling facility that is approximately 5,312 square feet, designed in an east-west orientation and an associated fueling canopy that is approximately 7,280 square feet and a north-south orientation located at the northeast corner of Higley and Riggs. The overall site is currently vacant land in zone community commercial with a planned area development overlay per the Seville master site plan. Three access points will be provided on-site. One will be located in the southwest corner along Riggs Road and designed as a right-in, right-out. Another right-in, right-out access point will be located along Higley Road in the southwest corner, and one last full-motion access point will be located in the northwest portion of the site along Higley Road. And as I previously mentioned, all proposed access points are to be constructed during phase one of the development. As for the building itself, it's situated on the southern portion of the site with the associated fueling canopy located just to the west of the structure. The building is oriented east-west that focuses those prominent elevations towards Riggs Road, while the fueling canopy is oriented in a north-south fashion. This alignment will allow the architectural features to be seen from locations with high visibility. The building and canopy location provides efficient truck, car, and pedestrian circulation networks while creating a reasonable buffer between the neighboring residential uses and the adjacent arterials. Parking will be located along the south and east property lines, as well as adjacent to the building's main entrance. There is sufficient number of parking spaces proposed to support customer and employee parking. All parking spaces will be properly screened with four-foot parking screen walls that will be architecturally integrated to match the existing wall seen throughout the Seville master plan. And based off the parking ratios for a fueling facility for our land development code, 54 spaces would be required, and 54 spaces are shown on-site. As for the landscape plan, the landscape plan proposes an assorted range of trees and shrubs. The types of trees include hybrid mesquite, live oak, and evergreen elm. Some of the shrubs and accent plants include aloe vera, desert dusk, red yucca, Nashville moonly, yellow bells, and yellow trailing lanthana. The subject site is also located within Zone 16 of the streetscape-themed trees and consists of Palo Verde and evergreen elm as the designated tree species. All landscaping materials will be evenly distributed along the site entrances and along the property lines. Landscaping will also be installed within the parking areas and around the foundations of the buildings visible to the public. As for elevations, the proposed building will be roughly 20 feet tall, with massing elements giving visual interest through variations of multiple building colors, materials, and articulation such as recessed walls, varying roofline, and cornice features, which create a clear sense of arrival to the structure. The main exterior wall material will be constructed of structural brick colored bronstone with accent materials consisting of ephes, aluminum, and steel. The color palette is consistent with the adjacent uses and is consistent with the non-residential design guidelines created for Seville, giving the structure a natural appearance and providing an emphasis on 360-degree architecture. The accent colors of the structure are the typical branding colors seen on Quick Trips in the valley and consist of QT red, QT brown, and other accent colors include granite and midnight black. All building entrances and facades will feature a metal canopy, standing seam awning, or a mix thereof, and will be finished with QT red and brushed aluminum. The proposed fueling canopy is to be 17 feet 6 inches tall to the top of the canopy with a clearance height of 15 feet. The fueling canopy will also include shared materials found on the primary structure, such as structural brick and aluminum, and the shared colors such as QT red and bronstone. In regards to photometrics, there are three lighting types proposed with the development. There are parking lot pole-mounted lighting, canopy-mounted lighting, and building-mounted lighting. The parking lot lights are mounted at both 22 feet and 14 feet in height, and parking lot lighting will be mounted at 14 feet along the eastern property line as they are adjacent to residential uses. The wall-mounted lights are proposed at 10 to 12 feet in height, and the canopy lights are proposed from 15 to 19 feet in height and will not extend below the clear height or ceiling of the canopy. Regarding public notification and input, planning staff has received quite a bit of comment from community members around the property, and some of the comments and concerns that we have received are increased noise and potential odors created by the fueling facility, visual impacts in screening to the neighboring residences, architectural compatibility with the existing structures within Seville, increased traffic volume to the immediate vicinity, overall safety concerns with the proposed use, time and location of fuel and convenience delivery, general concerns with the proposed use and its adjacency to residential, and lastly, hours of operation for the fueling facility and associated convenience store. With that, staff recommends approval of DR 22-71 Quick Trip located at the northeast corner of Higley and Riggs. And that concludes my presentation, and I open the floor to any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Sal. Any questions or comments for Sal at this point? Commissioner Johnson?
Chairman Sal, thank you very much. On the access points on the north on Higley, is there a provision for a left turn southbound on Higley into the site?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Johnson. On the site plan, let me go ahead and take a quick look here. So along Higley Road, there will be in the southwest corner a full-motion access point, so there should be the availability for the left turn in at that location. The other two proposed access points are right-in, right-out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Fay? No? You had your mic on, I wasn't sure. Hey, Commissioner Bianchi?
Thank you, Chairman. So Sal, I'm just guessing that even though this is more of a land use, that the 24-hour operation for community commercial is allowed, doesn't need a use permit or anything like that? Assuming we didn't see that, so it's acceptable.
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, per our code, in the community commercial zoning district, there is no regulations or limitations on hours of operation, and there are no mentions to hours of operation within the Seville P A.D.
So it's accepted, okay. And then staff's overall agreement, they're okay with the lighting plan as presented with the photometrics?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, staff overall is okay with the presented photometric plan.
Okay. And then I guess my other question would be, was there enter discussion of putting the trash enclosure on the north side of the development rather than the east side?
Let's see here. We're looking at the master site plan, correct? We're looking at the master site plan, correct?
Yeah, I'm just thinking for the QT itself, the enclosure that it's got on the east side, I was wondering if it could be put closer to the, on the northern end. I mean, I know it's probably easiest for solid waste to refuse to drive straight in there and grab that dumpster, but...
Chair Simon, Commissioner Bianchi, the location of the trash enclosure didn't raise any concerns for the planning staff in its current location, but that's something we can definitely take a look at to see if we can relocate that for better use on-site.
Okay. Thank you, Sal.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Sal at this point? No, we're good. All right, Sal, thank you.
Thank you all.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation now, or would you like to wait till after public comment? Or both?
Thanks for the opportunity, Chair.
Hit the button below the mic, the little gray button, down on the base. There you go.
Look at that. Okay. Thanks for the opportunity, Chair. I think at this point, Sal's done a really good job of introducing the project to you all, so I think it might be a good idea to hear the feedback from the members of the public who are in attendance, and that way, instead of coming up here twice, you guys can only deal with me once, and we can handle it all at the same time. So I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you. We'll do that. All right. So we have a few comment cards. I do have one. Shari Smith, I don't have whether you wish to speak or not. Do you wish to speak?
I do.
You do? Okay. So we'll start with you. So Shari Smith, if you'd like to come up, you've got three minutes. Please state your name and your city residence.
My name is Shari Smith. I'm a citizen of Gilbert, and I live in Seville. And that's why I'm here. So Seville is a homeowners association with over 3,000 houses, and it's a country club When we bought the house, we weren't told that there was going to be a gas station. I'm not exactly sure when the zoning got changed as far as allowing for some of the setbacks, but I do think it might have been during COVID. But my concerns with this are a few. One of them is that, given realtor studies, there are, there's a known immediate effect of a gas station coming in next to some properties, houses, of a 16% decline in homeowner value. And that basically goes out to 200 meters on a decreasing scale, and then it, the whole, the impact of it can be felt because of the house next to you went down, comps are going to go down, the other houses are going to go down. So they're going to go down all the way up into 600 meters, which is about 0.4 miles. So this is an affluent neighborhood. We pay a lot of taxes, and I don't think that this is the best use of what we've been asking for, which is restaurants, lots of restaurants. There's not one restaurant between Gilbert and Power Road on Riggs, nothing. They did finally Chandler put in a McDonald's. So the other thing that some of the property owners and I am concerned about are the health impacts of having a gas station next to us. Even when they have the very best mechanics in place to help stop the ozone problems and the benzene things, there's links of childhood leukemia going up. There's also links of asthma, especially with the ozone issues, directly next to it, and there are lots of studies that are shown on it. And then as far as the trash thing was considered, so that's going to be backing up to the people's houses that are right there. You've got the 30-foot gap, and then you've got lines of people's houses. So if that can get moved, that would probably help, because the smell of trash will be really bad, especially on those hot summer days. And basically, that, oh, that's it, except for the Equestrian Trail. Where is the Equestrian Trail getting moved to? Because that's an Equestrian Trail, the whole neighborhood is?
We'll need to ask staff. So go ahead and finish your comments, and we'll go from there.
My final comment is if we're going to build a 6,000-square-foot pad next to it, please don't give us another nail salon. We don't want a bright place. We want some places where we can eat, maybe even like a deli where you can pick some groceries up. Some wine would be nice, but we really, really asked for, we have been asking for in Seville, restaurants and places to go eat other than McDonald's and Taco Bell for years. So that's what we would hope that we would get next. A wine bar would be awesome, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have Louis, and I can't make out your last name, so I'll have you say that one for me. Appreciate it. State your name and your address.
Sure. My name is Louis Chicaloni, 7134 South Bridleville Drive, Gilbert, Arizona, 85298. And my house backs up right to the corner of that lot. Again, my name is Louis Chicaloni. I live in Seville, and I've been a resident of Gilbert for 20 years. My back fence is adjacent to the lot in question. Approximately 1,000 feet down the road from this proposed location is a Fry's gas station. Across the street from that is a Chevron. Down the road at Power and Chandler Heights, another gas station, a Circle K. Valvista and Riggs, a gas station. Power and Santana Boulevard, another gas station. Within 1 to 4 miles of this proposed location, we have no less than five gas stations. We don't need another one, and we certainly don't need one right in our backyards. More importantly, there is no buffer between our property and this proposed gas station. Again, my backyard literally butts up to that lot. No additional commercial buildings, no roads, no barriers, nothing. No amount of block wall, vegetation, or trees will block the view from our second-story window. We paid good money for our homes. Those are our investments, where we relax, raise our families, spend time with friends. And we don't want the noise and environmental pollution that comes with a gas station, let alone one that runs 24 hours a day, literally outside our windows. I've been a police officer in the valley for 23 years. Gas stations and parking lots produce noise, garbage, noxious odors, and oftentimes become informal gathering places for criminal conduct and nefarious activity. All of this would be in our backyard. The civic leaders of this town have a duty to protect the interests of their community. They should be creating a positive living environment and exercising sound development strategies that provide forward progress for our town while avoiding a negative impact to the residents. I can't think of a single place in Gilbert where a development like this would exist, where a gas station would be in such close proximity to our residential structures. I don't want my home value to depreciate because of an unnecessary decision. Is QuickTrip going to make up that difference in the value we lose, or how about the town of Gilbert? For a development opportunity that really fills no need. Would any of you want to look out your bedroom window and see a gas station? The plans you just showed, we were just shown, show a parking lot and a gas station within 30 feet of our backyard. So when my family and I are in the pool and we get to hear trash trucks and refueling trucks traffic at all hours of the night, that's unacceptable. Please carefully weigh the benefits of your decision versus the damage you will cause to our community. QuickTrip and anyone else is more than welcome to make money off the residents of Gilbert, but it doesn't need to be in a lot this small and in such close proximity to our homes. There are better options for them and for us. To the other residents here with similar concerns, if the town of Gilbert allows this to be built, then we have failed to vote for the kind of leadership we deserve, and that's something to think about moving forward. Thank you all for your time.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we've got Jim Kuzmic. Hope I didn't slaughter that. Jim, are you here?
I was here to talk about the other case. I guess I don't think you heard me.
You don't wish to speak?
I would like to speak, but I don't know if I'm allowed to. I don't know if you guys are allowed to.
I'm giving you three minutes.
The AT&amp;T case, am I allowed to speak on that or no? If I'm not, I'll...
Oh, you're for, you're here for a different case?
The AT&amp;T, but that was...
Okay. That was approved on consent.
So when was the opportunity to speak for that? Because today was the first meeting.
There were community meetings for that property.
Okay. The sign outside said it was today. I apologize.
All right. Next up will be Eric Rel. Did I say that correctly?
You did. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Eric Rel. I live in Gilbert, Arizona. Lived there for approximately 10 years. My concerns with this development are fairly straightforward. It is a concern of access and egress of commercial vehicles into that property, specifically coming off of Riggs and coming off of Higley. You're going to have large commercial trucks coming in and out of that very, very congested property. There's always been, already been incidents of accidents at this particular corner. The Riggs is a, it's a 45 mile an hour zone, but it is extremely busy road. We have commercial vehicles coming from quarries down in Queen Creek and such, and my concern is that they're going to see a 24-hour facility that serves diesel and try to go in there to refill. Again, this is not fair to the citizens that live around this for a 24-hour facility with that kind of noise level. So the products that the QuickTrip is offering and the 15-foot access for their fuel island is going to invite commercial vehicles to try to go in there and use that facility. And that's going to be a 24-hour operation. So that's the only concern I have, other than all these other good folks who have a lot of concerns about a lot of different things. I think that this is misappropriation of the land and the phase-three development, which is a 5,000-square-foot facility that we don't even know is going to be yet, it could be another tire store, which is something we do not need. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any other comment cards, so we'll go ahead and turn it back to the applicant. If you'd like to state your name and if you want to address any of those concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'd love to share my presentation as well. But for the record, my name is Lauren Proper Potter, PO Box 1833, Tempe, Arizona, 85280. If you, I actually have a few exhibits in my presentation that could address some of these concerns, but I think more generally, thank you. More generally, I think that what we just heard were a lot of concerns over the use. And the most important thing to note here is we're not here asking for permission on the use. We're in allowed use by right in this zoning district. Thank you, Ashley. And not only are we in allowed use, it has been projected to be a commercial corner since the initial Seville PAD was passed, I believe in 2001. It's in my presentation, so I have those details. I, certainly, QuickTrip always wants to be a good neighbor. We have markets to serve the surrounding area, and as much as we like to think that people will go out of their way to come visit us, the truth is that we serve the communities that are directly adjacent to where we put our stores, and a lot of thought goes into selecting those locations. Higley and Riggs, I'm sure you're all familiar with the area, but they're both, it's at the intersection of two major arterial streets, so it's exactly the place that you want to see commercial. It's always been intended to be that way, and so I think that's just really important to note. There's no secret that this was always going to be a commercial use. In terms of ingress egress, I will get into this presentation a little bit. I have some exhibits that'll kind of address those concerns as well, as well as walls and separation. We've gone out of our way, and we've worked with staff a lot to make sure that we're providing more than an adequate buffer. None of the setbacks are just the bare minimum here. Everything is significantly enhanced, and in fact, the separation from the property line to the adjacent residential is, I think, about 150 feet. So it's well beyond, I think the requirement is maybe 20 or 30 feet. So it goes well beyond that. We're also going to be adding some substantial landscaping. They're large trees, and everything that's going in is 24-inch box, so they'll be bigger from the get-go and intended, they're, Sal mentioned what those tree species are, but they're evergreen elms, they're mesquite variety, and I think a Chinese pistachion. So those all have, they're upwards of a 12-foot canopy. So those will provide a very good buffer for the directly adjacent residential here. I'll get these slides up for you. So this is the Seville PAD that was passed in 2001. You can kind of tell how old it is based on the quality. And I blew it up here in this corner. You can see this was always intended to be a commercial use. With respect to ingress egress, we, I'm sure you're all very familiar with how carefully and thoroughly your traffic engineering staff goes through, and I think you even maybe have a traffic engineer on your commission, so it's all been reviewed extraordinarily carefully with fine detail, and that's how we came up with the access points we have. Right-in, right-out only on Riggs, right-in, right-out only on Higley. Not only that, we're going to be adding dedicated right-turn lanes from Riggs onto Higley. It's going to be separated from a separate dedicated right-in that serves our driveway as well. Same thing on Higley. We're going to add a dedicated right-in for our property. There is a full access point a little bit further to the north that will serve the entire master site plan area, so that won't just be a QuickTrip entrance there. But we've designed these carefully to avoid conflict, to make sure that it's a safe entrance into and out of the site. This may show you a little bit more carefully, if you can see it while on your screens here, how those access points work. Again, right-in on Riggs, and then the curb bumps out a little bit. That's to make sure that people don't stay in that right lane too long. Adequate queuing distance that we'll add there. And then same thing on Higley. Here's a copy of the color landscape plan. It provides a little bit more context regarding the buffers here. And in addition to that 150-ish foot setback to the adjacent residential, as the Seville residents have pointed out, there's an additional 30-foot buffer there. So it does provide well beyond the minimum, and the goal there again was to make sure that we're doing what we can to minimize the impact of the proposed use here. But again, it's really what we're here for tonight is the master site plan and design review of our store and getting into a little bit of, here's some pictures of the landscaping, so you can see how big these tree canopies are. They're, they will get large, and they'll provide a good buffer for those neighbors. We've also drawn on the Seville PAD, Sal, our staff member alluded to this in his presentation, but we've drawn on a lot of those design guideline principles to, to drive some of the design here while still maintaining QuickTrip's corporate identity. And so we've done what we can. We'll be providing an eight-foot CMU block wall. We'll be matching this design here, and we'll be drawing some of the elements from this wall specifically to incorporate into the design of the QuickTrip. It's the reds from the bricks, and that will kind of do the transition from that architectural style into our architectural style. But we will also be providing some wall details here, a four-foot screen wall as required in the Seville PAD, and that's to just provide some additional screening to the vehicular uses on-site. One of the neighbors mentioned having commercial trucks pass through on-site. Something that QuickTrip prides ourselves on is making sure that we have adequately-designed drive aisles to accommodate all kinds of traffic, and we have pretty wide areas to accommodate various sizes of cars, but by no means is this intended to be a travel center. We will not have diesel fuel for trucks. It will only be for automobiles, passenger vehicles. So commercial trucks looking for diesel would be sorely disappointed, and it probably wouldn't happen that often if that were to be the case. And another thing that came up, again, it's not necessarily up for consideration, but I do want to address the concerns of the neighbors regarding the hours of operation. Yes, we do intend to be a 24-hour use. All of the QuickTrips are, as much as we wish we were incredibly busy all hours of the day, fact of the matter is, those later evening hours, early morning hours are not particularly busy. Staffing is lower. But by having the stores open 24 hours a day, we can address some of those security concerns of, if you've ever been to a gas station that it kind of closes in the evenings, sometimes it can get a little bit weird at night. And so what we can do by being open 24 hours, there's constant surveillance. We always have employees on-site. They walk the store. Our stores are designed, they're elevated in the middle so that there's always visual surveillance on the entire site, and our employees are always making sure that they're keeping an eye on what's going on outside of the stores. So I think, you know, that can address some of those 24-hour concerns, but we certainly don't want to foreclose any opportunities for nurses getting off work late or starting early to come in and get a cup of coffee or grab some food at the end of a long day. And so that is, that is why we intend to be open 24 hours here. I'm happy to go into a little bit more of the things we are here to discuss with you tonight, some of the design elements, more of the nitty-gritty on the site plan. I think Sal did a really good job of going over that, but I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for the applicant or comments? Yeah. Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you, Chair. So a question, you actually already started to answer it.
So, this is part of the Seville PAD, correct?
Correct.
Does Seville, did you have to go through any sort, do they have an architectural committee within Seville that you guys had to go through or present plans to?
No, we didn't. Thank you, by the way, Commissioner Bianchi, for the question. So, in the PAD document, it defers review of these items specifically to the town's appro, it says Design Review Board, but in that case, that's you.
And so, you just incorporate those elements in the PAD or their design guidelines?
Correct, and we've worked with your staff to make sure that we've done that appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No? Sal, I have a question for you that came up with regards to the Equestrian Trail. Can you shed light on what that was about or where that is? Because I'm not familiar.
So, I believe what we're calling the Equestrian Trail is that 50-foot buffer between the commercial pad or a commercial parcel and the residences just to the east of that. There is no Equestrian Trail here on-site, but that dedication there in the center is a pedestrian easement for a trail. So, that easement does connect to other open spaces throughout Seville. So, they are not building beyond that point. They'll have that 50-foot easement, and then they have that 30-foot landscape setback built off of that for their site. But as for Equestrian Trails, I, nothing has come up in our review that's shown Equestrian Trails for this parcel.
Okay, but that easement is not being infringed upon at all in this development?
It is not, no.
The only other thing that I wanted to note, and the applicant actually noted this, was that this was proved on the original PAD. I think it went in 2000, and then 2001 it was actually adopted, so this is quite some time ago, so. All right, any other questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. My question relates to the hours of the operation and the number of doors that you have on this development, because the QuickTrips have access on all four sides. A lot of grocery stores will close down an entrance in the evening to better monitor it. Is that something that's an opportunity to maybe close down that east side and maybe that north? Anything to kind of mitigate the evening impact to the neighbors?
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. By the way, it's good to see you up here. This isn't the normal setting I see you in. And you are right, QuickTrip does have, we have three usable entrances. One is on the east side. The rear is a four-sided architecture theme that's actually not open to the public. It's something that we could certainly look at doing if it becomes an issue, but again, I just checked my notes, we're 158 feet from the property line and then an additional 30 or 50 feet for that buffer. So, if issues arise, it's certainly something that we can consider. I'm not sure at this time that it's something that we would want to get into in the hearing.
I was just thinking, in terms of the parking that's closest to the neighbors, car doors, people chatting, talking, that kind of thing can get louder as you get closer, because I think you're only 25 feet from the parking to that. Well, I guess you do have a buffer in between you, so I didn't notice that. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments for either staff? Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your presentation. For disclosure, I live at 2990 East Castanets Court in HOA. I regularly use that corner. I take my grandkids to Castillo High and come back. I also use Riggs as an access point. I think in terms of a broader context, this is a necessary site for this type of use, especially along Riggs Road, has a lot of traffic. The last gas station convenience is Ellsworth, miles and miles away, so westbound traffic would be able to turn into there and head north on Higley. I really like the site plan, and I especially like the buffers on the south and the west side, and I think it provides for an attractive commercial use, not only for those who move along Riggs at a very heavy traffic volume, but also for community residents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fay.
May I please, thank you.
Yes, you may.
So, my review, I didn't look at the use at all. That wasn't the question when I did my analysis, when I rolled out the plans. I was focused on design elements, and, I know, it's kind of a joke. One of the things I do look heavily at is drainage, and this is a little bit of a reverse of my normal. The documents indicated it will have adequate underground drainage. My calibrated eye tells me that you don't need underground drainage. You've got plenty of space to hold surface retention. I didn't necessarily know that that really rose to a comment, Sal. I mean, if you want to put in underground drainage, knock yourself out, but, so I didn't, in terms of whether or not there should be a gas station or what should go here, I didn't look at that at all, because as far as I'm aware, that's not even the question we're considering tonight. So, all I focused on was design elements, and the only one I had was one that, but for the way this, tonight has gone, probably wouldn't have even raised, getting spoken to. File it away in the back of your mind. My guess is you don't need to go through the expense of underground drainage. You've probably got plenty of space in your landscaping to hold all your surface drainage and save yourself a few bucks.
That's great feedback, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
I have a question for the applicant. Would the applicant be open to relocating that trash enclosure away from that single-family residential that's to the east?
Thank you, Commissioner.
I see a spot that's probably a good landing area that it could probably go to.
So, thank you for the question. We're certainly open to looking into that. It's a little bit of a challenge to make sure that we meet the solid waste requirements for pickup, given the access points, and I know a lot of times the trucks don't like to back up, but we, absolutely, it's something that we're willing to look into. We don't have a spot picked out right now, so it's certainly something we'd be willing to work with staff on.
Okay, well, I am quite familiar with the, with those requirements, and the area that I'm looking at is if you're coming in off of Higley, that bottom, you go head east, there's a little curb, little churn in the curb right there, and it looks like there's some sidewalk. That would be a perfect landing spot to put it there. It'll still meet, you don't have any backup requirement, the 50-foot backup requirement, you don't have to worry about that. Trucks could easily go in, scoop up, turn around, head north past the east side of the fuel canopy and exit off on the Riggs Road.
Certainly, if we can fit the refuse enclosure in that location, I don't see that as an issue to move.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I think that's it. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. We'll bring it back up to the dice for any discussion and/or a motion if there is one. Do I have discussion? Commissioner Johnson.
I move approval of DR 22-71, QuickTrip, Higley and Riggs Site Plan, Landscaping, Grading, and Drainage Elevations Floor Plans, Colors and Materials for this location.
Let's go ahead and hold that for one minute. I just want to make sure nobody has any other comments or anything that they'd like to state. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Bianchi.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It seems like this kind of constantly comes up every couple of months in front of us is, we get the design review case, and folks want to talk about the use, and, you know, we try to have to figure out why the use is allowed and what we look at it from a site planning standpoint. So, in that regard, for the folks, the residents, I understand your concerns. I would have similar concerns as well if this use was near my house. But again, we've talked about it. You know, the zoning on this was established 20 years ago. The hours of operation are okay. We can look at the site, we can look at the layout, we can look at the circulation and the drainage, but that's really under the design review is all we're looking at. So, especially if you're kind of new to this process, it's kind of a learning curve on that, so I definitely understand, but we're kind of limited to what we can talk about as far as use is on here. In regards to the site plan, I think we've raised some good questions. Commissioner Anderson on the trash enclosure, I would be in favor of moving that as well. Anything to mitigate the impact to the neighbors. I think the layout, we talked about the buffers or the setbacks have been met or far exceeded, has been pointed out, and even the general layout with the fuel canopy is a lot different than what we see at normal QT. So, I think they're trying to push that higher level of activity towards the intersection and mitigate that to the folks there, to the adjacent residential, to try to mitigate that a little bit. So, in regards to that, into the use, the design review, I think they've made the adequate changes. I think we talked about this being, trying to keep the look and feel of Seville, so in that regard, I would be in favor of it, but I just want to try to explain that a little bit. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Bianchi. Anybody else have anything? I'd like to ask staff, can we add a stipulation to review the placement of the waste to see if there's another place we can put it or the pickup, where we can put that? Can we add a stipulation to?
Chairman, yes.
Okay.
You can add a stipulation. You may want to say that either condition it that the applicant must relocate the trash enclosure, or that the applicant look to relocate it if it fits in the location that Commissioner Anderson suggested.
Okay, thank you. So, I'd just like to reiterate what Commissioner Bianchi said. These come before us. This was zoned over 20 years ago on a general plan with regards to Seville, so we don't have the opportunity to say yes or no. It is by right, and obviously, we're, you know, like to look at things from a property right perspective. So, I don't have any issue with this. I think that the QT has actually made great strides to be a class above just a typical gas station. Those who've been back east, Wawa is a very popular facility to patron, I guess if you will, and I feel QT's made strides in that direction, which is more kind of that convenience store with the gas station, which is much, I think, a step up, so I have no problem with this. Commissioner Johnson has a motion on the table. Commissioner Johnson, would you like to amend that motion, or you would like to keep it as is?
I'd like to keep it with the discussion for staff to follow up then.
Would you like to make that as a requirement or just a stipulation to review?
Stipulation for review.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table to approve DR 21-71, QuickTrip, Higley and Riggs with a stipulation to review the trash enclosure and potential movement to a different location. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Please cast your votes. And that motion carries 7-0. Thank you all for coming out this evening. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number 11 on the agenda, Z23-03, Gilbert Santan. And we've got, Nicole, you are up.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. Nicole Russell, Senior Planner. The application before you this evening is Z23-03 for Gilbert Santan, Santan Rezoning. Here is the vicinity map showing the subject parcels in relation to the existing neighborhood. To the north, you've got partially developed and undeveloped parcels in RU43, which is Maricopa County zoning. To the south of the property, you've got Single Family 15 as well as RU43, also county zoning. To the east, you have Single Family 35 and RU43. And to the west, you have Single Family 15. Surrounding the subject parcel is predominantly developed single-family residential homes, single-story. The request before you is to rezone approximately 30.6 acres from Single Family 15 to Single Family 15 with a PAD, Planned Area Development Overlay Zoning District, to modify lot coverage, setbacks, and building height. Just as a refresher, here is the final plat that was approved by the Town Council last night, showing a 42-lot subdivision. The proposed deviations include the reduced building height, front and side building setbacks, and lot coverage, with the rear setback of 30 feet being maintained. According to the applicant, the proposed single-story height limitation will present a development that provides a housing product that maintains unique features such as side-entry garages and multi-generational units, while also conforming to the general characteristics established in the Santan character area of Gilbert. Restricting homes to single-story is a creative design feature in a zoning district that allows two-story as a matter of right. According to the applicant, the modified front and side setbacks are to accommodate this single-story limitation. There will not be a change to the rear yards as previously stated, and the applicant states that additionally, the project itself will afford development standards which allow more building options for potential buyers. According to the applicant, the increase in lot coverage allows for the creative home footprint that is comparable to the existing built environment and accomplishes this buffering objective while also ensuring that overall building square footage is appropriate for the area. Here's a graphic provided by the applicant showing what the current allowed building envelope is in the SF15 zoning district and what the proposal for the modification in the side setbacks and the front setbacks and lot coverage would entail. As a point of clarification, the shortest driveway would be 25 feet. The applicant did public participation, which included a neighborhood meeting on November 30th of 2022. Some of the comments included the issue with, or the concerns over the matter of right two-story allowance for homes and placement of an access gate on 172nd Street. Staff has received a petition of support from all the neighbors, the eight property owners on the west side of the site. And as a point of clarification, the applicant did take the two-story off the table initially and, or had the two-story as part of the request initially and reduced it to one story to make the development fit in more with the area. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, staff asks approval from the Planning Commission, please apologize for that, for Z23-03, Gilbert Santan, Planned Area Development as requested, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Any questions or comments for Nicole? Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you, Chair. So, I'm looking at this, is the pre-plat looking to be filed concurrently with the zoning, since it was included in both these?
The pre-plat was already approved.
It was already approved, okay.
In 2020.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, with the GP classification, they're mitigating the fissures in the locations through the plat, so, so, yeah, that's it, no concerns. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? The only, I guess, kind of comment that I would have, and you mentioned it, is the driveway. I mean, we're looking at probably relatively expensive homes, and the driveway's long enough to put a truck in. I mean, it's fairly short driveway, and that's my only problem with these developments is we get really short driveways, so, but I don't know that that's anything. I would just make that a conversation as we go through where the placement of the house is on the piece, on the property, so.
Chair Simon, this was a concern that was brought up by staff. Since I do own a truck and I'm concerned about being able to park in any driveway, I was assured by the applicant that 25 feet would be the shortest, and there will be side loading, so some of those driveways would be larger to accommodate various vehicle types.
Understood. I mean, I just, the typical truck is about 17 or 18 feet long, so 25 feet leaves no room for a second vehicle, and that's just my only concern. Again, it's not a point of contention other than just a concern I'm throwing out there, so. Other than that, are there any questions or concerns for Nicole? I have none, so, thank you. Is the applicant here, like to give a presentation?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your record, my name is Reese Anderson, 1744 South Al Vista in Mesa, and it's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I have a presentation I can answer probably any and all questions, but Nicole's given you a great overview of it. You've had a robust discussion about a QuickTrip. I don't think you have any yellow cards here submitted by members. cards here submitted by members of the audience. I'd rather be respectful of your time and just say that we've worked really hard. And if you take us down memory lane, we were all together in July of last year. Three gentlemen came up and said, "We really don't like two-story homes." Hut Hassel, the property owner who's with us this evening, said, "I think we've got a solution." We came back, that's why, that's why the preliminary plat was approved by you, final plat approved by council. But here we are today. I think, I'm actually proud to be part of this case, where we are making some lemonade out of the lemons, and doing something that's more compatible with the surrounding area. I could show you a map that shows the entire square mile, and I, by my count, only 14 homes in this entire square mile are two-story homes. So I think this, what changes made here are very positive, very helpful, and in the right direction. I don't want to take any more of your time. Let me answer questions that you may have.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions for the applicant? No? Pretty easy. All right.
Every now and then Providence smiles on us, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, right. All right. And I don't, I do not have any comment cards from the public. So at this point, unless there's any questions for staff or the applicant, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back up to the dice. Look for any comments and/or a motion.
Well, Chairman, seeing that I don't believe there's any comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve Z 23-03 Gilbert Santan.
I have a motion to approve by the vice chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Fay. Please cast your votes. And that motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
You too. Have a good night.
You too. All right, moving on. Item number 12 and 13, we're gonna do a combined presentation because Keith is the master, is what I've been told. So we're gonna go DR 22-92 Traditions at Fred's Place Residential, as well as number 13, DR 22-93 Traditions at Fred's Place, the commercial. So Keith, wow us.
Chair Simon, members of the Commission, I will try my best to wow you. But if I don't, please don't judge me.
We're always judging.
The project that I have before you tonight is Traditions at Fred's Place. And as you can see on the screen in front of you, there are, like you stated already, there are two cases. One is a residential site, residential development for an apartment complex, and the other is a commercial development. It's part of the same master site plan, which we are attempting to establish tonight. As far as some context, per that last slide in this one, you can see that this is at the northeast corner of Higley, oh, sorry, excuse me, Williamsfield and Recker. And I always like to show this map when I do present a project in Cooley Station area, so you can get that context of the immediate area that is rapidly growing and developing. You can see it's surrounded by apartment complex to the east, District at Cooley Station, which is still under review, to the west, on the other side of Recker Road, the Frye Shopping Center to the south, and then Kitty Corner, or we can say Cater Corner, that's actually, I've heard that's the real way to say it, is Verde at Cooley Station development, that is, you can see, is completely almost developed. There's another building being constructed now. And then you have all these other developments around apartments and mixed-use type buildings that you can see, that I've brought forth to you in the past, and will be bringing forth more in the very near future. So the request tonight before you is for, as you've already stated, design review approval. And this is to develop the commercial site on 3.9 acres and the residential or multifamily site on approximately 8.17 acres within a larger 12.07 acre master site plan. So here is the master site plan for you, and you can see both sites. The commercial site, which I already stated is 3.9 acres, is located right at that hard corner of Recker and Williamsfield. It consists of three buildings and about 19, almost 20,000 square feet of space. You have two shops buildings, shops A and B, and then you have a pad site building, P1, which is, has a drive-through restaurant, or a drive-through lane with it. Can't tell you exactly what that is yet, but that, you'll be seeing that coming down the pipe in the near future. And the site has 146 parking spaces. The site also has, you see, three access points, one off of Recker Road, two off of Williamsfield Road. And the one entrance off of Recker Road and the easternmost entrance off of Williamsfield Road are also the access points, or two of the access points, for the residential project that surrounds the property to the north and to the east. The residential property is 8.17 acres with 93 units. Some are duplex units, some are just standalone buildings. All the buildings are one and two stories in size. They contain one and two and three-bedroom floor plans that range from approximately 800, or 800 square feet in size, up to 1,500 square feet in size. And they are the two-story buildings, the two-story units, which are the ones that are, they're spread throughout the development, and so are the one-stories going to be as well. But you have two-story units that will line the streets along Haskell, Recker Road, and Williamsfield Road. And this project was designed specifically so that these two-story units, and so units in general, are built right up close to the streets, as far as we can place them, given what the front setbacks are, which is 20 feet along Williamsfield Road, 20 feet along Recker Road, and 15 feet along Haskell Street, which also contains on-street parking. You will notice that the drive, there's a drive from Haskell Street that comes down through the west side of the single-family, or the, excuse me, the multifamily project that connects Haskell Street to the commercial development, which we thought was a key element that was needed for circulation for both properties. So that is the master site plan. One thing I would like to note is, there's a nice little trail connection on the far east side. It's hard to see on this plan, but it's actually harder to see on that plan. So excuse me, I'll go back to the master site plan. You can kind of see it there on the west, oh, sorry, excuse me, on the east side of the site, it is a DG trail, about five feet wide, that will connect, from a pedestrian standpoint, Haskell Street all the way to Williamsfield Road. So as far as the landscaping on the site is concerned, there's about 24.5% of open space for the commercial parcel, which far exceeds the minimum requirement, which is 10%, of, that's listed in our LDC. And the residential site has 45% open space. I would like to call your, oh, one thing before I move on to the next page, next slide, is the site was designed by the applicant to contain, along the street frontages, along, mainly along Recker and along Williamsfield Road. You will see a lot of hardscaping that exists today, there was improvements that were constructed by the town. The parallel parking that you see out there today, the on-street parking, is being removed in favor of D cell lanes that were required by our town engineering staff. But you will still see the hardscaping, the pavers, the Cooley Station, like red brick pavers. But you will see the buildings all the way to the front setback, 18 feet along that frontage. And you will have entrances from those buildings out to the street, and you will have trees and grates, and some shrubs and things. But we wanted to create a really urban streetscape environment that fosters pedestrian activity, and creates that neo-traditional vibe, and that you can see across the street, or in Verde at Cooley Station development. We want to continue that theme throughout this immediate Village Center area. I wanted to show you also the open space plan. This open space plan shows where the open spaces are located for the residential project. It shows that there's 45% open space. And they have private backyards, which also has quite a bit of open space, about, there's 60 square feet per unit is required by the code, and they actually have more than that per unit. But I just wanted to show you this plan, to show you that they are meeting the open space requirement. Now, I wanted to just make a quick note that there is a little minor discrepancy you'll see in the landscape plan and the site plan, that shows the total square footage of common open space area to be, it's about, there's about 1,000 square-foot discrepancy that we're going to have the applicant fix, before we stamp the plans and write that notice of decision. Just wanted, just wanted to let you know that that was a discrepancy that we're going to fix. So the residential building, I'll show you these elevations. The residential buildings are about, I wrote it down, they're about, they're one, some of them are one-stories and two-stories, but the residential, the smaller ones, are about 26 feet in height, excuse me, that's not correct. Let me get to my right page. That's for the two-stories. So for the one-story buildings, they're about 24, man, wrong page. I have two staff reports here, guys, so I apologize. I'm kind of fumbling through both of them here. Okay. About 17 feet or so to the midpoint for these residential units, and about 26 feet 8 inches for the two-story units. So both one-story units and two-story units meet the height requirements, and they're actually below the height requirements. So this is one of the single-story units. And as I'm flipping through these, you can see they have standing seam metal roofs, stucco walls, with a combination of board and batten siding. They'll have wood trim around the windows, and they have Cooley Station red brick in strategic locations, mainly around the doors and as pony walls. There's wood trim, there's wood beams for some of these patio columns. And here's the two-story units. So I'll just flip through these really quickly so you can see the design. The design is more of a farmhouse-style design, which is, with a lot of white paint, of course, which is very characteristic of farm-style design. And the farm-style design stems from, this is the character that we are trying to create in this Cooley Station area. And we, so here they, here's some other type of residential buildings. There's like five types of residential buildings. This is a duplex. And then here is the leasing building. And then this is a little fitness center that they have there near the pool. So, and here's the garage building, not a bad-looking garage building. Looks kind of like a little farmhouse-style barn. It's kind of neat. So the commercial development, the elevations, you have, this is the Shops A building. This building is about 31 feet 7 inches to the midpoint, about 35 feet to the peak, to the ridge. And you can see the Cooley Station red brick again has been incorporated into the design of this building. You have wood siding, there's stucco, there's metal paneling on the next building, you'll see it. But a more of a neo-traditional-type farmhouse-style design, and you'll really see it in this next, here's a rendering of that building, kind of makes it pop a little more. And you'll see it in this building a little bit more, you'll see the metal. And this one also has wood siding and stucco as well. And then here's the rendering of it. And then the, the building with the drive-through, you can see also flat-roof building, the same, similar general design, wood paneling. The colors on these buildings are all tans and whites with, of course, the metal is more of a red color. But we really tried to get the entrances out to the streets for these buildings, and each building has entrances out to, that lead right out to Williamsfield Road. And of course, on the north side, which is where the parking lot is located. And here's a rendering, and kind of the space in between the buildings. So again, here's the master site plan, again, just to show it to you one last time, before I end the presentation. So as far as public participation is concerned, staff has received no comments from the public, or surrounding property owners, since we've, since the very beginning of the process. So our recommendation tonight is that you approve the findings of fact, and that you approve the Traditions at Fred's Place residential design review case, and you approve the Traditions at Fred's Place commercial development. And that concludes my presentation. Tried to keep it as brief as I could for you. And if you have any questions for me, I would love to answer them.
Right. Thank you, Keith. Questions or comments for Keith? Commissioner Fay?
I do. So I have two areas, one of which we've talked about in some length. I just want assurance, the public open space, the green on the open space, does not include the private open space, that those are two separate, separate things, and that the private open space is not part of the, so the 50,000-odd feet of private open space is not included in the 160,000 feet of community open space.
Chair Simon, Commissioner Fay, that is correct. The blue area on this plan, which is private open space, is not included in the green area, which is the common open space.
Perfect. Okay, so that resolves number, the entire discussion, that hits it from earlier today.
Perfect.
But there's one other issue that kind of, that came up while I was digging through things and looking at this, parking numbers. And there's two. One is kind of a philosophical point. Commissioner, this meets the land development code numbers, except for one thing, Keith, I'm going to ask you about. And so it's approvable as is, but it's also going to be a tight squeeze. And I predict a year after the developer moves on, there's going to be a Facebook page, that people are going to be fighting about parking, and then they're going to be putting up commercial signs that say, "No parking for residents," of blah, blah, blah. And eventually, it'll end up with people complaining in front of council, which is why I had some concerns about the previous land development code modifications to parking numbers. But as I was looking over the parking numbers, I'm going to have to pull it out now, but I think it said 19 of the parking spaces that they're counting are surface street parking on Haskell Street. So of the, of the required 180-odd spaces, 19 of them are actually on the public right-of-way. Did I read that correctly?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Fay, yes, that should be correct.
Those aren't, but that's public right-of-way, right? That's not actually in, that's city right-of-way, right?
That is correct. It's town right-of-way.
So the property has no control over that spot? I mean, are they, private property owners are not allowed to count street parking as part of their parking requirement?
Commissioner Fay, there is a section in our land development code that does allow for that. I can't remember exactly which section it is, but that is permitted. For a site like this, where you have on-street parking adjacent to it, we have allowed that in Cooley Station development to, for them to count off those parking on the, in the right-of-way, to count towards their parking for the actual onsite development.
I was not aware of that. That's crazy to me, because that means the HOA has no control over that parking. Somebody could park 12 cars in that, and they've got no control over it. I can park in it, and they've got no authority over me. The city could close it altogether, right?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Fay, I suppose they could. We don't anticipate that obviously happening or occurring. But, I mean, I can let the applicant speak more about how they're going to manage that, and if they, I know it's city-owned property. I don't know if they've talked, I can't remember if they've talked to our engineers or our traffic department about that. And we have our traffic engineer here as well, that can maybe address some of that, and how that maintenance would occur, or if, how that would be managed.
I guess if it's in the land development code, I did not realize that part. It's one I've never run into in other cities. And if it's, if it's there, we've got to approve it by right. But that's crazy to me. And the next time we revise our LDC, the ability of a private landowner to count their parking requirements on city-owned or any other neighbor's property is bizarre to me. I think we should look that up. But if it is what it is, I guess I see the point then.
I'm guessing, well, this is multifamily for rent, right?
That's correct.
So I'm guessing those spaces on the street are going to be allocated for visitor parking, not allocated for the residents. So the residents will be where all the canopies are. That's all assigned parking. And then what's left over is usually going to be your visitor parking. So I'm assuming what's on Haskell Street, residents are not going to be parking there. They'll be parking in their assigned spots, and Haskell Street will be probably visitor parking.
Yeah, and I think it says that, but I'm also surprised. That also means there's essentially no visitor parking on the property?
Well, there is visitor parking. So wherever you see a canopy, that's an assigned spot for a unit. So that's, that's your resident parking, and there'll be some other, you know, open spaces that will be free-for-all for residents. But I'm guessing everything on Haskell Street will be- be visitor parking. And that's kind of the whole idea with this whole Cooley Station, and I remember this way back when, like, long time ago, when this whole thing was getting designed and planned, was to create that kind of urban environment here, and that's, when you go to urban environments, you have that on-street parking, it's no different than like downtown Gilbert, this on-street parking there in the side streets.
Chair Simon, if I may, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Chair Simon, if I may, like I said, I couldn't remember the exact code section, but one of my amazing coworkers did, found it for me in the code, and I can tell you exactly where it is. Section 5.3, and it is letter E, talks about visitor parking. It says, "On-street visitor parking, or on-street parking may be counted toward the visitor parking requirement for developments in the single-family detached, single-family detached, mixed-use, and multifamily zoning districts, provided that the street has a minimum eight, eight-and-a-half-foot-wide legal parking area exclusive of travel lanes," blah, 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 the rest of it. So it is allowed per our land development code, and Commissioner Anderson is correct. That could definitely, that's probably, that is the area that we intended to kind of be used for visitor parking, to meet that code requirement for multifamily developments.
I understand it, but they're not actually dedicating Haskell Street, are they?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Fay, I believe they are, yes.
Oh, they are? Okay, I thought it, I thought that was all already existing. Okay, I'll drop the point. That answers my questions.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Simon, Keith, you recall last time I had some questions about neo-traditional design and sites, and you sold me. So I think this really, especially in the commercial areas, going back to the landscape for the residential areas, and that green zones, does that provide for pathways along the frontage of those houses? Let's say a family is taking their kids on a stroller, and they just want to go out, they don't want to go beyond the area, but they just want to walk within that complex. Are pathways basically incorporated in the frontage of those residential units?
Chair Simon, Commissioner Johnson, very good question. To answer your question, the answer is yes. There are sidewalks throughout the development, they're a minimum of at least four feet wide, I think they might even be five feet wide, but you will see sidewalks connecting each unit straight to multiple, to the other units that are adjacent to them and to the parking lot. And of course, the ones that are located along Haskell Street and along the other street frontages, they'll have direct sidewalk connections at various points out to those streets. So yes, there will be a pretty good network of sidewalks.
Thank you, Keith.
And if you notice, sorry, just one more thing. If you notice in your packet, I don't have it on the screen, but there was a pedestrian in the landscape package, there was a pedestrian plan or a pedestrian circulation plan that showed all of those circulation pathways.
Thank you, Keith.
Yeah, no problem.
Right. Questions, comments for Keith?
The only question that I have actually is along the same lines as parking, although it's a little bit different, and that is that we've got both covered and garage parking as well as uncovered. Do we know, and this may be a question for the applicant, is the garage parking going to be at a premium and as an option, or is it going to be included in some of the units? Because if it's at a premium, then I could see them running out of parking space where people say, "I'm not going to pay for a parking garage, I don't need to pay extra," so.
Chair Simon, I don't know the answer to that question. Mr. Greg Davis, representing the developer, is here tonight, and he can gladly answer that question.
Okay, so why don't we go to invitation by the applicant, and we'll bring the applicant up and go from there. Thank you, Keith.
Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Greg Davis with Iplan Consulting, address is 3317 South Higley Road in the town of Gilbert. Good to see you all again, it's been a while since I've seen you, and a new face. Good to see you, Leslie, it's been a while. But thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Obviously, you've seen this case now for almost a year and a half, and we're here, hopefully, getting close to the finish line. I think Keith did an excellent job in his presentation. I was wowed, so I won't go into my presentation, but I do want to obviously answer some of the questions that have been asked. I think Commissioner Anderson's response regarding the parking is exactly right, this area is a very unique part of town. This area used to have street parking on every side of it, or the street sides of it, so the west and the south. Unfortunately, because of turn lanes and traffic safety, they've removed them off of Williamsfield and Wrecker. Otherwise, we would even have more parking, but that certainly was our intent, and it is only visitor parking that is accommodated by that street parking on Haskell. The garage design was meant to be tied to the larger units, the family-size units, so I don't believe there's any intent to offer those as a premium, it's built into that rent of those units themselves, so it'll be charged that way. Otherwise, pedestrian paths, absolutely, every unit is accessed via walkways. We've kind of reversed the orientation of the units so that the units face each other, so as you're walking out your front door, you're looking not at a wall, but at another house, which hopefully will enhance the situation. And then, of course, this is Cooley Station, so we have sidewalks around the entire perimeter of the property, including along the east boundary, which is the landscape area next to the apartment project, the continental one, so we do have perimeter circulation there. And we're also providing some crosswalks and some special paving across the shared driveway so that it's easier for residents to walk over to the retail area. We imagine that those two uses are going to be built around the same time and entwined from a use standpoint. So with that, I think I answered all the questions, but I'm happy to answer any others that you might have.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments? Yeah, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. The only question I have is more of a clarification, that the north side of this street already has that type of street parking on it for the apartments there, is that correct?
Chairman and Commissioner, the north side has onsite street parking, it doesn't have all the cutouts like the south side does because of the type of development it is, it's more single-family in nature, but yes, there is street parking on the north side of those, of that street.
And so the, but these are all the ones that are being counted, and I apologize, but that's all on the south side then, adjacent to this?
Sure, absolutely. Chairman and Commissioner, it is correct, that everything that we're counting is immediately adjacent to our property, part of the dedication to the town.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Questions, comments?
No? I do have one question, that is with regards to the east side of the property, obviously it's got quite a bit of stuff on it right now, is there going to be an abatement process that goes, that needs to be done, or a time period that that needs, or has that been soil testing, and we're good there?
Mr. Chairman, yeah. As part of the sale of that property, it will be, go through an environmental assessment to determine if there is any mitigation that's required. For the most part, Fred's just kept his farm implements and various things that people have dropped on his property over the years, so we don't expect there to be any issues, but it will be mitigated as part of the development of the residential. Our first phase encompasses that entire area, so that'll be the first thing gone.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments for staff? Or the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any public comment cards, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it on back up to the dice, and entertain conversation, discussion, or a motion if there is one.
Chairman, I just wanted to clarify, this has to be two motions, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, one for the residential, one for the commercial. Thank you.
Seeing as I believe my esteemed council members here do not have any other, or commission members, look at that, don't have any comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve item DR 22-92, Traditions at Fred's Place Residential.
I have a motion by the Vice Chair to approve, recommend approval on number 12. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Davis, please cast your vote. I'd say my finger wasn't taking. All right, motion carries 7-0. Do I have a motion on item 13?
As luck would have it, you do, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve DR 22-93, Traditions at Fred's Place Commercial.
All right, I have a recommendation for approval on item 13. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Davis? Or Commissioner Fay? We can fight it out. All right, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion carries 7-0. Sorry, it doesn't, it wasn't taking, and then all of a sudden it's up there, so I apologize. All right, with that, we have no executive session, report from the chairman or members of the commission. Do I have anybody have anything, reports? No?
Chairman.
Yeah, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to point out to everyone, if you hadn't noticed, that it's very hot, so just drink lots of water. Thank you.
Thank you for that public service announcement, Vice Chair. Ava, do I have anything from the planning service manager?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. First off, I think that was Nicole's first presentation for the town of Gilbert, so thank you, Nicole. Also wanted to remind everybody that next month's meeting will be the second Wednesday of the month, so on the 13th. That will allow people to fully enjoy their holiday and also allow the planners to attend the state conference. And also wanted to note that Samantha and Noah will be presenting our newly adopted mixed-use ordinance at the state conference, and it is also up for an award at that conference.
Excellent. Very cool, good job. All right, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn until September 13th? No, August 13th, wait. September 13th. I don't even know what month we're in, so, yeah, I know, I made it almost to the end.